In a Coliseumian order, please silence your electronic devices and stand for the indication given by council member.
Thank you. This is in memory of commemoration of Memorial Day. It's a prayer for all our veterans. Oh God, our heavenly Father, you have blessed us with brave men and women who are willing to defend our freedom. May your protection and grace surround them each day. Let your healing hand be upon those who suffer wounds and injuries. May those who have made the ultimate sacrifice rest forever in your holy presence. Comfort the families who mourn and are left to remember the precious lives of their loved ones. Help us to honor and support them. Let us ever be mindful of each sacrifice made on behalf of the American people by our sons, daughters, husbands, wives, mothers, fathers, and friends. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a proclamation for the police department for a flag ceremony. Flag day.
Flag commemoration ceremony.
Commemoration ceremony. So this starts with this proclamation and there'll be a...
Yeah, so there's a ceremony tomorrow at Grandview Cemetery at the grave site of Arthur Lufflaw, who was a policeman, patrolman from until 1915. Sorry, 1915 to 1931.
Here's the proclamation. Whereas the officers of the City of Batavia Police Department are committed to the preservation of life and property, risking their lives to provide protection, law and order, and serving the cause of justice. And whereas the officers of the City of Batavia Police Department accept a profound responsibility and work to uphold our laws, safeguard our rights and freedoms, and serve on the front lines in the fight against crime in an effort to keep our neighborhood safe. And whereas many of the officers dedicated several years serving the residents of the City of Batavia, most serving longer than 20 years. Their service to the city meant time away from their families and loved ones in order to protect the community that they took an oath to safeguard. Whereas each year, the City of Batavia will recognize the dedicated and brave officers who have been laid to rest since retiring from the police department by placing memorial flags at each officer's grave site in remembrance of their service to the city. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, City Council President and retired police lieutenant Eugene Janowski Jr., on behalf of the City Council in the City of Batavia, do hereby make this proclamation to honor our departed police officers who have retired from the City of Batavia Police Department, who by their loyal and selfless devotion to their duties have rendered dedicated service to our community, and to declare May 29th as the City of Batavia Police Department Flag Commemoration Day.
Thank you. I'll see you there.
Justice King submitted their application for their Juneteenth festival on Saturday, June 15th at 12:00 PM in Williams Park.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay.
Batavia Downs requested to hold a 5K on Sunday, June 16th at 9:00 AM at the racetrack and on city streets. It was the same route as last year through the VA and down Richmond.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay.
The Batavia Business Improvement District requested to hold their annual cider walk on Saturday, June 22nd from 4:00 to 8:00 PM in downtown Batavia. They have requested the open container waiver as part of the agenda for later on tonight.
Okay, any questions or concerns on that? Okay.
And the Joe David Arts and Music Festival is scheduled for Friday, July 5th in Jackson Square from 6:00 to 10:00 PM.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay. There are any more? I just want to make sure there was nothing to edit at the last minute. The next city council meeting will be held Monday, June 10th, 2024, 7:00 PM at the City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. Also, take note, on May 31st at 11:00 AM at the corner of Bank and Elba, there'll be the official groundbreaking for the new police station construction. A lot of local dignitaries and think Representative Penny will be there as well, so...
When's that, Mr. President?
May 31st, that would be this Friday at 11:00 AM. And you council should have gotten emails on it for the... If it got by you, then that's why I'm announcing it now to remind everybody. So this Friday, 11:00 AM at the location and go from there.
Mr. President, I'd like to make two announcements here before we get into the discussions. One, I'd just like to thank all the city staff and all the employees for doing a stellar job for the parade this year. And downtown looked beautiful with the flags, the flowers. I mean, these guys really worked hard to get everything done. Just did a super job. The other one, I have a message from a Batavia business owner for you chief, the police department and your employees. Mr. Barrett, he said to extend his wishes and thank you. He said the police did a stellar job. They were very professional, very polite to him. They beat him there. The alarm went off and he went there. And he says, "You guys were right there on top of everything." And he just wanted to commend you and your department for a great job. So, thank you, Mr. President.
We have one discussion for the Narromore Drive and I see there's some correspondence here.
I wanted to provide you with a correspondence from a gentleman on Woodcrest who lives right... That's right off of Narromore Drive. He is concerned about pedestrian safety on Narromore and asking that we look into it further. We are going to hopefully place the speed sign on Narromore when we find a...
Yeah.
Okay, great. I didn't drive by. Try to see what the speeds are there on Narromore and look to come up with some sort of solution. I know those who live there would hate a four-way stop, but it might be the way to slow things down. Speed bumps he recommended. And I thought about possibly using colored asphalt on one side of Narromore to create like a walking trail area that would then compress the cars into closer lanes so they'd go slower in the area. So I wanted to bring it to council's attention and basically seek permission to look into the issue on behalf of the resident.
Spikes, strips work.
I mean, it's worth looking into.
Looking into, yeah, sure.
At least we can find out some information, like you said, how many... What's the average speed on that street?
Yep.
Or I noticed a lot of people like to wear dark clothes when they're walking their dog or off her walk. You know, maybe use your head a little bit and put something bright around. That might help. But getting back to Narromore, there's... They're gonna have a by North Point there.
Yeah.
John Harroway was wondering, why is the plan more making... We're trying to make up sidewalks and there's no sidewalks there. Two years ago, he put in about 500 feet of new road connecting Carrollwood and Harold Square and they didn't see he had sidewalks then. So why is it happening now? Where do we go from here? And...
Well, I know I spoke to John Harroway and talked about the possibility of requesting that the planning board wait till the entire development is done to lay the sidewalk and if there is another connecting sidewalk as an option. I don't know, Brett, you were at the planning board meeting, if that was discussed or not.
No sidewalks in that whole neighborhood anyway. Now why putting them there now? Why?
Yeah, and that concern was brought up by a couple of residents about would basically connect into...
Nowhere.
Correct.
Yeah. So we have no...
There are a couple of ones in there. Why you...
I'll let George talk about the planning board being an independent body at this point.
Well, yeah, I would defer to the planning board's review consistent with the site plan process and subject to Doug's oversight as well, that they've got to make sure that the development is put forth consistent with the city code to the extent that that might have been a requirement. That's probably why they're imposing that on the developer.
Okay, so is it changed in two years? Because like I said, he put 500 feet of new road connecting Carrollwood to Harold Square and nothing was brought up then, but sidewalks there?
Counsel, I guess I'm not sure if there was an actual development reviewed by the planning board at that point in time or if it was just infrastructure improvement. Granted, we'd have to look at that a little bit more, but to the extent this was specifically reviewed by the planning board, that's what we need to discuss and to apply to code.
Okay, because it's an added cost that Mr. Harroway...
For sure.
That's unnecessary.
Well, I mean, a lot of times municipal codes do require sidewalks as part of the progress.
Should the whole neighborhood be grandfathered in if the whole neighborhood doesn't have sidewalks?
That's generally not the way it goes when the codes are updated. So there are code changes that take place consistent with updates to the master plan, update to the zoning code and the specific subdivision requirements of the code. And as those things change, they impose additional requirements moving forward. We'll need to double check to see how it was reviewed by the planning board, but I would, again, respectfully suggest that the planning board's got discretion to have to look at those site plan applications, development plan applications, and make sure they're doing it consistent with what the code requires.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So these are a lot of questions that need to be answered. So the only way to find out is to take a hard look at the street and see what's going on and where the complaints are to lie and get back to us, I guess, with that. Good stuff. That's... We're good with that?
Thank you.
Walnut Cohocton Bond Resolution?
Yes, thank you, Council President. You have before you a bond resolution for $4,170,000 for the city to replace 6,500 linear feet of new water main on Cohocton and Walnut. We've discussed this project at length for the last three years. We felt that Cohocton was definitely a replacement was needed, but as the folks in Brett's department got into it, they realized that Walnut has had significant amount of breaks in that area as well. So these are transmission lines that do go out into the town, but they also serve some of our residential customers. So we are looking to have a bond authorization in place so that we can move forward with requesting funding from the state WEA program, which is the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act. We have been successful with WEA funding before. We received it for the water plant improvements jointly with Genesee County, and they will fund up to 60% of the project, which is eligible. Everything's due in mid-June, so we do need to have the bond authorization and how we will be paying for the project moving forward.
Rachel, what happens if we don't get the grant?
I think we still need to move forward with the project and it would become part of our financing portfolio. Right now, we have... I didn't bring my updated capital sheet for water, but we have not financed a water project, Lisa, probably in five years, since I've been here at least. I know I'm saying that. So there are times when we do want to use financing for major projects like this and I... If we do not get the funding, I'd still recommend we go forward with the project.
So how much is in the fund? I mean, is this within our reach to do this or we would have to bond the 1,000?
I think we'd want to bond the entire project out.
So even though the 1,666 we have bonded all and then we'd get reimbursed 60% and then continue to bond with the remaining?
Yes. Yep. Absolutely.
I just wondered how we were going to do this.
Yep.
How much we're going to bond?
We would bond the entire 4.17 million with the hopes to receive 2.5 million from the WEA grant.
So that would leave us spending 1.66...
Correct.
...of our own money.
All right. How long will that bond be for?
Between 30 and 40 years. I have to... I think we put 30 years in the bond resolution.
This is like... This is more than your average project. This is a pretty lengthy rerouting.
30 years, yep.
Long overdue, but it's going to make a huge difference on that end of the city.
Yeah, that Cohocton runs all the way from Trednezeap all the way to Walnut, south on Walnut, basically to the town by. It's over a mile.
What I saw was one of the most important things on here when I read it was that it creates the fire capability of being able to get water in a certain area, especially where the lumberyard is, of all places where you might need water. So this is... That's... I mean, just as a public safety standpoint, that's huge right there. So not to mention, we also need the service lines for everyone in the area, but I mean, that's just a nice thing to wrap up and get that back in play again for our public safety. So thanks on that. Anyone else on this? So are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting for a vote? Okay, that gets moved. The Seeker?
Yes, so in front of you, you also have the Seeker associated with the project. We did send out, as you might recall, council agreed to be lead agency at a previous meeting, and we did send out notices to the project... On the project to interested and involved agencies. We received comments back from the DEC about various wetlands, water quality certification, flood plans, historic and architectural and archaeological and cultural resources that we need to be cognizant with the engineers and contractors as we move forward with the project. But I would recommend that based on the environmental record, that the project will result in no major impacts and therefore will not cause significant adverse impacts on the environment and that the council can issue a negative declaration on the Seeker.
Is that line going to run where there's the existing line?
It will not, actually. It will run on city property.
I'm sorry, I didn't get my agenda until today. I had a problem with my city email site.
Okay, yeah, no, so it'll run parallel to the existing line till we can place it into service.
Right.
And now the line will be on city property.
How close will it run to the existing line?
I don't know. I didn't measure. I'd have to go out and look.
I think the existing line is in the middle of the road and this is going to be off the road.
Off the road.
Yeah, that's the problem. I think the Cohocton, they were giving us a hard time about the right-of-way digging near the power lines or whatever they had over there. So you're moving it towards the Genesee lumber side of the road, right?
Correct.
And you're going to run it on city property, just link that whole road, it looks like right up to Franklin Street.
That would make it...
Genesee property.
That would make it easier to service and repair.
Yes. It will and we won't need all the easements from National Grid.
A lot of appendices on that.
I don't know, 20 feet away?
It's been...
Probably close. 20 feet, yeah, it's parallel by about 20 feet.
As long as there's no wetlands we have to go through.
It's the road. I think it's just a dirt road right now. It's an old railroad right away, I think. Brett, isn't that where the existing forest mains go on to the treatment of that?
Yes.
Any other questions? So are we in consensus to move that to the next business meeting?
Yes.
That gets moved. And water line easement?
Yes, also for the project, there is presented to you an easement at 73 Franklin Street, which is Genesee lumber, that will allow for the necessary water system upgrades for the Cohocton water line and will include the installation of the new 12-inch water main crossing the Grantors property, which would cross Genesee lumber's property. And actually, speaking about the fire flows, it's probably a really good thing that will have increased fire flows right next to Genesee lumber, actually.
And then the eight new fire hydrants too added to this mix.
Yep.
Any questions on that? Are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting? Tilt trailer bid award?
Yes, the tilt trailer was in the budget. The wastewater plant is looking for a 27-inch tilt trailer in which they can move the excavator and its attachments. Right now, we have issues doing that and moving it place to place. So go ahead, Brett.
Yeah, basically, we went up to bid for a 27-foot trailer to move what I would call our new excavator, mini excavator. It's probably less than a year old, but I still consider that new. So in our budget, we had $43,000 total budgeted for a breaker for the excavator, tamper for the excavator, and trailer for the excavator. The trailer came in a little bit more than we expected. The only bidder was Davis Trailer World, came in at the amount of 24,137, but getting all three items, we came in just over $42,000, so we're still roughly $800 under our aggregate budget for the three items.
Okay, good. Any questions on that? Are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting?
Yep.
That gets moved. Water treatment facility headworks change order?
Yes, thank you, Council President. As council's aware, after the pandemic, when the federal government released ARPA funding, the city put $250,000 aside for doing multiple projects, waterside and wastewater side. On the wastewater side, one of the projects was the loading study or the headwork study, which was done. We needed a full year of sampling and in the first three to six months, the samples were inconsistent due to a user's discharge. So we had to re-sample at the end of the 12-month period, an extra three months of samples, causing us to go over what we had originally projected for this budget. So the increase we're asking for is $16,000 to cover that last three months of sampling we had to do because we needed better data than normal data, I'll call it, than what in the beginning was being discharged from one of our major users.
And it's coming out of sewer reserves, right?
That's correct.
Any questions or concerns on that? Are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting? That gets moved. Cider Walk?
Yes, the cider walk has requested open container as part of their application for their event, and you'll see the resolution attached in your pocket.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay, are we in consensus then to move that to the business meeting? That gets moved. Special inspection contract?
Yes, so as part of the construction of the police facility, it was recommended from our owners rep, Ken Pearl, that we should have a special inspections and material testing services for the design and construction of the new police department facility. The contract was put out as an RFP. We did have one successful response. That response was Barron and Associates, who also did the...
The geotechnical.
The geotechnical work at the beginning of the project in the amount of $40,000 for this contract. And rap materials testing, is that... Like when you bring steel or something on site, they go through and test the material and make sure there's no deficiencies before it's...
This will be more along the lines of specialty like compaction testing.
Okay.
Foundations and that type of thing. So different inspections that need to happen along with the new build. And unfortunately, unfortunately, whatever we want to look at it, they are required by Chapter 17 of the New York State Building Code to be part of the process.
Any questions on that?
Should the GC do their own inspections or do you have to have a third party?
Yeah, yeah, the GC will oversee that and then he'll also be the go-between with the special inspections and our owners rep, Ken Pearl and myself. But yeah, unfortunately, you've got to do special inspections on top of your normal inspections as well.
Thank you.
So this will all be on the base, building base?
Majority of it, yes.
Majority of the work on that, yeah. And then on top of that, is there a clerk of the works on materials and...
There's no clerk of the works.
I would say Ken Pearl is acting in the role of clerk of the works.
Yeah, exactly. Part of his own rep responsibilities would be, I guess we could call it clerk of the works. I do like saying clerk of the works.
Want to say it one more time?
Clerk of the works. No, it sounds like something outside.
Does anyone have anything to talk about besides clerk of the works? All right, so we're in consensus to move that to the business meeting?
Yes.
Batavia Downs agreements?
Yes, so the city has provided... Been providing services to Batavia Downs specifically for their Friday night concert series in relationship to police protection, any type of crowd control, which they haven't needed. It's, you know, their concerts are pretty tame. But we wanted to have an actual agreement in place and they are charged per officer for their entire salary and their fringe benefits. And Sean, if you want to discuss that any further, please go ahead.
Yep, so they are planning on nine concerts this coming season. We staff those concerts face upon what the artist is and what the estimated crowd is. We have final say in how many officers are actually staffed there. And the Downs has been very worked with. They don't give us any hard time with the number of officers that are assigned. In fact, they would have as many officers as we could supply if they, you know, that would help. So, yep, so their first concert is the 21st of June, running through August 16th. So we'll provide security and overwatch at those concerts for...
And we provided that for four, five years?
Four or five years now. This is... The agreement is rather new, but it does protect us to make sure that they are being held to, make sure we're...
Any questions or concerns on that?
John, historically, have you had any problems during the concert series?
I think we've had a couple of ejections and maybe one arrest.
Yeah. Good.
So are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting? Jackson Square entrances?
Yes, so as part of the Jackson Square project, Eric and Julie Daly, our grants administrator, put out an RFP for iron signage to go above each entranceway on Jackson Square, one on Center Street, one on Jackson Street to announce you're entering Jackson Square. We did receive two bids back and we'd like to go with Arc Welding LLC of Elba, state of the arc, excuse me, for $21,875. And Eric, if you have anything to add?
Brett can jump in because he's actually seeing the final designs, but they're actually going to be two-sided. So the front side facing all of St. Jackson Square and the other side will say...
It'll say Jackson is square. We kind of... Yeah, and we kind of refer to it jokingly as the mullet, where the...
The what?
The mullet, where the Jackson Street side will be a little bit more businesslike and then the backside, the Center Street side, will be a little more party-ish. So, yeah.
From the view from inside versus the view from walking in will be different. It'll be more artsy on the inside and more just plain... Are these like historical signs, like that iron sign? They'll appear that way. Obviously, yeah, they're new, but they'll... Similar to something like that? They're supposed to fit in with the, you know, page of the buildings and that sort of... Oh, cool. Part of the DRI project, it's part of our budget for that project. We originally thought we could fit it in with the original general contractor's bid, but they don't do that work, so we had to go outside and try and run a design.
So they'll be custom-made?
Custom-made.
Eric, will they be lighted?
They won't be.
Will there be any light, exterior lights shining out of them?
Just the streetlights on Jackson and Center. Oh, and we will have canary lighting going all the way down those alleys.
Right.
So there will be... There'll be lights down there as well as for Jackson Square. We met today with the architects to kind of do almost final walkthrough with some ideas and stuff like that. So we got to kind of see the layout of how the lighting was going to work and that kind of thing, but the actual signs themselves will not be...
There will be lighting in that area because those... After them from Jackson Street turns into a dark tunnel.
It is, yeah.
And I think that we had kind of forgotten till we went through our walkthrough meeting that, yeah, there would actually be lights, the canary lighting both sides of the alleys.
Those are the exact square.
Great, great, thank you.
It's going to be sharp, almost like familiar with River Works down by the water, you know, with the hot drink and give it that industrial look.
Exactly.
Keeping it lit up is also a safety aspect.
Yep.
Any other question?
They're also LED, very energy efficient.
If I can add, we are trying to plan, I believe it's June, Friday, July 12th, a hard hat tour for council, the bid board and the BDC board to have everyone out and look at all the different construction projects. We'll certainly invite the media as well. But just a walking tour to show the progress we've made on the city center silos, Jackson Square, some of the private sector projects like cars and other things. So we will be back with more details on that to get everyone out there to see the projects. And Al McGuinness reminded me, we hadn't been out doing that, so thank you, Al, and we'll get you out there and touring all the different construction projects.
Rachel, can bid pay for any of this stuff?
We have a $750,000 grant that this falls under from the DRI Department of State, so we have the funds to do it, yep.
We can spend it. Thank you.
We will be coming back with wayfinding signage as well because they agreed to fund wayfinding signage in the downtown. wayfinding signage in the downtown that'll point out major landmarks like the ice rink, Jackson Square. We can't have any particular businesses on the signs, but it'll say business district as you're entering it. So we've wanted wayfinding signage for the last 10 to 15 years, and through this, this project came in under budget with the stage and the concrete in the square, but we'll be able to do the wayfinding signage as part of that, and you guys will see an approval coming across once we put that out to bid in the next couple of months as well.
So are we in consensus to move the Jackson Square sign and the entrance signs to the business meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you, Council President. Whereas Article 7, 105, 1E of the Public Forces Law, this legislative body of the municipality to enter into executive session to discuss what was happening or current litigation. Whereas Article 7, Section 105, 1F of the Public Forces Law, commence the legislative body of the municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to employment, employment, promotion, demotion, disapprent, suspension, dismissal, or ovo of a particular person or corporation. Now, there be resolved by the council of the city of Batavia for final approval of destructions. The council must hereby enter into the executive session.
All the roadheads?
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayekowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.